... dispense with a few of the normal formalities. Item two, audience participation, that is as per normal. These are both public hearings, so you do not have to fill out a card. If you was to speak, when I call for speakers, please approach and enjoy your three minutes. Moving forward, item number three is public hearing and possible action on the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We'll just wait a minute till I get this presentation up. There's nothing new really being presented tonight. It's just a brief recap of what we've talked about so far. I did some graphs, high-level graphs, to show you, I guess, give you a visual of, and a comparison of what you're used to seeing as far as totals. And we'll just go through it, and this is a public hearing. We will table, we'll recommend that you table and take action at the next regular council meeting on the third. Okay. And so, at Councilmember Big Horse's request, some of these are a little bit different than what was in the packet. We've added totals and on some graphs, percentages. These first few slides are the total of all funds, the total budgeted, proposed budgeted revenues. You can see next year, and this is apparent in all of our discussions that we've had, is there's, there are a lot of projects going on, right? So the use of fund balance there and bond proceeds, those are all related to our projects. The Knowles project, Parks projects next year, finishing up the fire station, the Knowles Phase One, and the library and senior center. That's more than half of, half of the budget. And same, this picture says the same thing, except this is looking at the expenditure side. So you'll see that 56% of overall expenses proposed for next year are these capital projects. Now, there is some capital outlay included in that, but by and far, the largest part of that are those projects that I just mentioned. And then you'll also see that 7% of our total expenditures are for debt service. We've talked about this multiple times. When we're issuing debt, we're, we're taking out a loan, basically, and we have to pay principal and interest on that, and that's what that 7%, the $6.5 million for debt service is. And then this is just another way at looking at total expenditures in the budget, and this is just, again, looking at it by the types of expenditures. Debt service, personal services, those are all of the costs related to personnel, salaries and benefits, operating, and again, capital outlay, which includes the capital projects. Just a different way of looking at it, the same numbers. And now, these next few graphs are for the general fund only. I've said this a lot, I estimate about a third of the general fund revenues are property taxes, about a third are sales taxes, and then the last third are the other charges and fees that we collect. And that's what this graph reflects here. This is the general fund expenditure by department. You can see about 50% of our general fund is public safety. I've updated this slide based on the presentation at the last city council meeting. The top part, the changes to the general fund, we've already discussed, based on the changes that we made to revenues, and then the one expense that we added, we have a positive operating imbalance of $59,390. And then I also made a change to the proposed budget for the PID, the PID fund, and that's based on the annual service plan update that was presented to you all last council meeting. So it's just a increase in the assessments, based on the presentation. The expense side is the same at $18,000. Those are the projected administrative fees. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I'll stop if y'all have questions, but we've gone over these topics time and time again now, just the highlights of each of the funds. The general fund includes the salary adjustment, as well as a health insurance increase. A lot of the expenses and the other priority were facility maintenance, repairs, and we had some security items, and then finally, equipment replacement. In the debt service fund, the big topic there was debt service, and we talked about the impact to the tax rate for the almost $24 million in general obligation bonds that were sold. The enterprise fund, we talked about the increase in water and wastewater, and those are just a pass-through because the cost that we're having to pay for water and wastewater are increasing. The salary, the employees in the enterprise fund are getting, are proposed to get the 5% as well. There's some equipment replacement in there, and then the, the two big construction projects in the enterprise fund are the belt mill and the Northwest booster pump stations. The Northwest booster pump station is partially funded with escrows. Those were impact fees that were collected previously. So that's the transfer from the enterprise escrow fund into the enterprise fund to pay for part of that Northwest booster pump station. Capital projects fund, these are the same projects that I just mentioned. We're going to either be finishing up projects that we've already started or starting the new projects. There's a proposed bond sale next year for Phase Two and Three of Knowles and the Parks projects. The drainage utility fund, we've talked about that a couple meetings ago, proposing the drainage fee increase of a dollar. And then the big project there is we'll start, we'll start on the construction of the East Cement Creek Phase Two. There's also equipment replaced there. That was the mower and the skid loader being replaced out of the drainage utility fund. And CCPD, we've got replacement of the three patrol vehicles. There's a building security upgrade at the police department building, and then the CAD RMS system replacement. The only expenses proposed in the expendable trust fund are supplies for the K-9 program, and in street maintenance, the big project there proposed for next year is a portion of Knowles from Park Center to Bailey-Boswell. This is, this project will be paid out of street maintenance fund, which is funded with sales tax.
Kim, where is the repair to the police department roof? What, where is that being funded from?
That's in general fund.
Yeah, that's on CCPD.
And that's going to be part, right. It's going to be ARPA-funded.
How much water do we have in there today?
Well, we're going to go by bucket size. We probably have eight or nine buckets that are collecting water right now, so they've been dumped a couple of times a day, so I don't know the gallons that we've collected.
Let's reinforce the need to fix the roof.
Nothing really remarkable to talk about in donations fund. It's just the ongoing programs that we've had for the last several years, and the same is true of the general escrow fund. These two are new funds in this current year. The Belt Mill PID Public Improvement District, we talked about that a little bit last week. We have a fund that we will be collecting revenues and expenses in, and same is true for the tax increment reinvestment zone. This will be the first year that part of the property tax revenues will go into that reinvestment zone fund. Both of these are, the council is the primary members of the board, so at, at some point in time, you all will be the ones to determine what expenses will be coming out of these funds. That's all I've got for the public hearing presentation on the budget. When we get to the public hearing presentation for the tax rate, I've got a few more slides.
Council questions for Kim? Mary, yes, please.
Would this be the time to discuss if we want to spend that $59,000 extra on some of these unfunded items? Is this the appropriate time to discuss that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. I don't know if anybody else had a chance to, to look at that and have some suggestions, but my thought was the part-time dispatcher and the part-time adult learning assistant, that would take us $1,320 over the $59,000, and I didn't know if that would be something that could be easily, you know, taken care of, that small amount of money, just decreasing a few items, so that it wouldn't go over the, the amount that we are over.
I'm sure that we could find some capacity if those are the things that you wanted to add. I, I do want to mention that the estimates that were on one of the slides, if that's what you're looking at, have been updated. I think that they were, we were just using a ballpark of 20% or 25% for benefits, and so I actually calculated a better estimate for what those would be. So you said the part-time dispatcher and the part-time adult learning assistant, were those?
Yes. The figures I have are 37.7 and 22.620.
Yeah, that was, that was what was on the latest slide. So I've got $42,600 is a better estimate for the part-time dispatcher, and then the adult learning assistant is 29.210. So that will be, so that would be closer to $71,810 for the two of those positions.
Mary, other questions?
And how much did you say was for the part-time dispatcher with the new calculations?
$42,600 for the part-time dispatcher and $29,210 for the part-time adult learning assistant.
Okay, well, just my opinion is, I think we should fund that part-time dispatcher, and then whatever's left over, just carry that over in next year's budget.
I guess the immediate question I have was, if we funded this, could we find someone to hire? Chief, I know we've had difficulty finding dispatchers. Could we, could we even spend this money if we had a budget?
So I'll be quite honest with you. We're sitting with three positions that are vacant in dispatch right now, having difficulty finding applicants to fill those. Funding a part-time dispatcher right now is just going to be a vacancy that's, that's carried for the time being, because we can't find applicants to actually apply for the full-time positions that we have available.
That would be my biggest concern, Mary, because we, we can't fill it. Wish we could, but it's been proven to be such a challenge, you know?
So Gabe, do you know anything about whether or not it would be difficult to find the part-time adult learning assistant?
I don't think Ellen's here, but that's certainly a position that we would want with the new library, so I would guess that they could fill that. Something for the council to consider, a couple of things, really any amount in extra capacity we can use in streets, and that could be a jumpstart towards our sump program, if that's the council's desire, to go ahead and replace complete streets with new water and wastewater. So we could add that to our ongoing street maintenance budget pretty easily.
In addition to the part-time library?
Yeah, any, any ongoing capacity, I think, you know, we're always going to have street maintenance projects that need attention.
Cindy? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, I mean, I had to give this some thought, and two things lingered to me. One was, I'd asked some questions a while back, a minute back, about, we had had this survey done of our roads and stuff, and we're right on the cusp of, right now, if we invest that money there, we end up saving, big savings, to where if we let it go too far, the cost of maintenance on those streets will come a lot greater, and it'll cost us more money to fix them. So I was glad to see Gabe. So if he's going to spend the $59,000 this year, or whatever it is, I would much rather see it spent on something like that, to where we're spending money now, to where if we delay that money, it's going to, you know, we're getting the biggest bang for a buck. The second thing is, is I'm just overall concerned about the economy in general. It's slowing down across the United States, and just because I got $10 in my pocket don't mean I have to spend $10. I lean more towards letting it roll to next year, and if Saginaw does good, then, you know, we'll have that $59,000 plus, hopefully more, and that can still then be used on roads or what we deem. So to me, if we do spend the money, I think it really needs to go to something to where if we spend it this year, it's going to save us more money for the citizens, or let's just be a little bit more conservative and just keep the money in our pocket. It don't, it don't cost us anything to do that.
I might add one thing, too. In light of the, you know, tremendous rain this morning, we're in the process of identifying facility needs. I think about every city facility, unfortunately, has had AC troubles this year, which, given the incredible heat, is to be expected, so I, I expect ongoing maintenance with some of our facilities is going to be a concern going forward this coming year.
We increased our building maintenance funds for this year. Could you tell us what that total is? I mean, the, I mean, like $38,000 or something, we increased our maintenance, but what's the total amount that we're going to dedicate to? Because I'm afraid it may not be enough. Although we probably could buy some more five-gallon buckets for Chief.
And I think we added $100,000, just the one-time repairs that we know about, like, which would be the community center and some things here, there at the Rick Center.
But I think we need to invest more into repairing what we...
That's true. We have $100,000 for one time, but just the regular ongoing building maintenance budget is $191,000, which was about a $38,000 increase this year. That was one of the line items that we, I think, answered a question for previously, and I think that was just, it had a lot to do with the aquatic center and ongoing expenses that are required.
So that's $191 for all city facilities?
That's true, yes.
That's not much. What is the, you're talking about 5% salary adjustments. What's that total, the 5% going to cost the citizens?
The 5% in the general fund is about $617,000. That's not just the salary, but that's the salary and then the associated payroll taxes and TMRS costs as well.
Does that include the health insurance increase of 7% as well?
That does, that does not include the health insurance increase.
And what is that total, please?
Almost $85,000. Eighty-five in the general fund.
And how many employees do we have? Please?
The total of all, in all funds is 100, for full-time positions, 159,000. I mean, 159, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And how about part-time? Do they get the 5% as well?
Their salary is adjusted as well. Let's see, I don't have the totals, so I'll have to go through and add them.
That's all right, we can pick that up another day.
She'll get there, may take her. Don't worry.
Oh, I know she will. I believe it's 19 in general fund. It's all departments.
That excludes seasonal, though.
That's true. That's just regular part-time.
So we have...
It's the part-time at the library.
Forty-plus during the summer, maybe more.
Could we give part-time to part-time?
No.
So they wouldn't be part of the 85, 5%?
Yes, that is, that doesn't, oh, no, not the, not the insurance, no. But it, they, the regular part-time do, we obviously pay payroll taxes for them, and they do get TMRS.
Other questions on the budget for Kim?
Yeah, and when do we expect the water, the wastewater and the drainage utility fees to increase?
October 1st.
Okay. We just had an increase in water, right?
This current year, we had an increase in, I think this current year, we had an increase in water and sewer. The year before that, I think we had a decrease in sewer and an increase in water, or maybe it was reversed. So we try to, we try to pass, pass through whatever Fort Worth does. So the years where we have a decrease, we pass through that decrease, and the years where we have an increase, we pass through that.
I'm just amazed at what you have in your head and at your fingertips. So thank you very much for the information you provide to us so quickly and accurately.
You're welcome.
Other questions, council? This is just budget. Any other budget items you have a question on? No other budget questions. We are in a public hearing, so anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item, you may approach the microphone at this, at this point. If not, at 6:23, I take us out of a public hearing. We will propose no action tonight. We do have a quorum, but Mr. Flegge is not in town, so we wanted to wait till we had a full council to vote. Since we're not utilizing the de minimis act, we have time, and we can take action at the next meeting on the 6th, I believe. So if that is the will of the council...
Do we need to table this?
I don't think we need to table it, or do we?
I think we need to table it.
We're out of a public hearing, so we're not in a public hearing.
I believe we do need to take official action.
I think we're supposed to take it.
Do we have to table? Okay.
Okay.
If that is will of the council, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we table this until our next meeting on September 6th.
Okay.
Second.
Please place your votes.
Oh, I was going to raise my hand again.
Yeah, it's hard to remember.
Why is mine red? I voted green. Mine is green.
You voted against your own motion.
No, I didn't. I voted green, I pushed the green button.
I mean, whatever you want to do, Valerie, I don't want to push you.
I'm going to go get my color, and color, it's green.
All right, motion, motion passes. So this is tabled. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Item number four, at 6:24, we are back in a public hearing on proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2022-23. Again, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Okay, got, got a few slides for this as well. They should be familiar, haven't done anything new on the tax rate. Okay, so this is just a recap. Our, our certified estimated next tax, net taxable value is over 2.6 billion now. That was a 9.9% increase over July of last year. Existing values went up about 7.8%, and our new value represents about 2%. And of the new value, majority of that was commercial. The taxable value of an average, average single-family home went from about $202,000 to $217,000. This compares the current rates to the proposed rates. We're going from the $47.951.6 to $51.371.9. You'll see how that's broken down between operations and debt, O and M versus INS, and the average, the average property tax for the city taxes would go from $971.70 per year to the $1,119.79 per year. That, but the seniors would see the decrease there. So the average senior was paying in the current year $731.94 a year, and they will see a tax bill average of $606.08.
Kim, would you step back and explain the M and L versus the debt piece?
Sure. So the, the tax rate by law is approved and broken into two different pieces. INS, which is the debt side, and O and M, which is the operations. The O and M, the operations part is what goes into the general fund, and the debt part is what goes to the debt service fund to pay our debt.
I want to highlight that the O and M, M and O, O and M operations piece went down, but the debt went up. Of course, we sold $23 million worth of bonds. So that's how that works. So the operations are a little bit cheaper this year, but the debt is where we're getting our, our big uptick due to bonds we sold per the citizen's input. Also want to point out the, the drop, the savings for seniors, that's a result of our exemption going from $50,000 to $100,000, right?
Correct.
That's a break for our seniors, 100 and whatever a month, so that's a nice relief for them.
Right, 100, that's a difference of $125.86 a year. So not only did they not see the increase, but they saw a decrease. Okay, and then this is the table that was requested, I think, at the last meeting. I'll just reiterate that based on these cities, we're the third lowest in total tax rate. And then this last slide is a slide I think that Councilmember Big Horse was asking about at the last council meeting, and now we had proposed rates from the other entities, so I was able to complete this for you. So a total, the total property tax bill for the average valued home in the city of Saginaw is $5,519, 3,127 of that is for the school district. You'll see I rounded up 1,120 for the city of Saginaw, which represents about 20%. And that concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, any tax rate questions for Kim?
Is there a place we can go to find out the tax rates for the school district and Tarrant County College and the hospital and Tarrant County itself?
The TAD website, or you should, every, every homeowner in Tarrant County got a postcard, where you can actually go to TAD and see your estimated bill and the breakdown of all of that. So this is just an average, but each individual person can go to TAD. It's Tarrant, I don't trust my memory. I think it's tarranttaxinfo.org, maybe? But it's, it's the, it's on the postcard that everybody got. You can also just go to tad.org, and I'm sure there's a link to that same website. And so you can look up, but if you have the, the information on your postcard, you can look specifically up for your home. But it also does have a list of all of the proposed rates.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's just the economy is so difficult on our, on all of our citizens this year. You know, we're just trying to do what we can to help.
Counsel, other questions for Kim? All right, so we are in a public hearing to discuss the tax rate. All right, so we are in a public hearing to discuss the tax rate. Any folks in the audience who wish to speak, now's your time, now's your chance. It is an open mic, so please approach the mic.
Afternoon, evening. I just want to say that I sent a link to y'all about the... Any tax rate that is higher than the no new tax rate is a tax increase. So find a way, if you can achieve it, to achieve it. Last time I came here and I talked about, you know, priorities. Definitely bullets, the police department, fire department, and everything else. And then bandages and everything else to operating funds. And then beans, basically extras. So try and work to that. I know y'all can do it because other cities in, in the state of Texas is doing it. You referenced TAD a lot. I'm gonna caution y'all again, TAD is a, it's a corrupt organization. Their chief appraiser got fired, or not fired, suspended without pay so far, and I'm, I'm looking into that. And their software that they analyze our taxes and our property is homegrown, homemade. It's not certified. And that's gonna be under investigation as well. They put bandages on something, basically like an Excel spreadsheet that just went wild. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. No new taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Anyone else who wants to speak? Now's your chance. Yes, sir.
Brent Wooton, three-hundred Brinkley, mayor, council, city staff, it's always good to see you, and I certainly appreciate all y'all's efforts. I'm a retired individual who happens to be widowed, living on a fixed income. And I'm a responsible citizen of Saginaw. And my biggest enemies, as along with everybody else in here, is inflation and taxation, okay? Inflation, we know, everybody has felt the sting of sticker shock at our gas pumps and our local grocery stores. The latest numbers was nine-point-four percent in DFW. Now, that's higher than the national average that they keep spending in DC. And this bill, this seven-hundred-and-forty-billion-dollar bill they just passed will... The nonpartisan economists are saying this will do nothing for inflation. And they're expecting this to go on into next year and beyond. And the Fed's gonna raise rates, they're talking about that again, which will have a major impact on my income because it's on the, my retirement funds. So when I see a taxation increase, and at the same time, I see the city of Keller, they just passed this a few days ago by unanimous vote, seven to nothing, to have the lowest, or to have the biggest decrease in their property tax rate in years at point-three-five. North Litchin Hills has lowered their tax rate, and they've raised their homestead exemption, okay? The city of Fort Worth has proposed a lower tax rate. We deserve better than, you know, just willy-nilly, I know it's not willy-nilly. And I'm sorry, Kim, you do an excellent job of compiling all these numbers. I didn't get a five percent raise, okay? I had a major cut in my income due to this inflation, and now we're gonna raise taxes. And it's frustrating. So I just encourage y'all to take a hard look at this, very hard look at this. Because it impacts a lot of people in Saginaw. And this is the sort of chipping away and chipping away that drives seniors like myself out of their homes. And nobody wants that, okay? And I think it's possible to do better than what this is and maintain our city services and public safety. So thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Kim, will you go back to slide number, I don't know, your second tax rate slide, please? There you go, that one. So just remind folks that seniors' taxes will go down this year. That bears repeating. Seniors' taxes will go down. If you're over sixty-five, sixty-five or older, your taxes will be reduced due to the exemption. We raised the exemption from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. So that's one thing we try to do for folks that are on fixed incomes is to lower the tax rate for the seniors, or the taxes for the seniors, sorry. The rest of us will pick up that, bear the brunt of that change. So this is one thing I want to point out. Other questions, other comments, other folks want to speak? We still are in a public hearing.
Yeah, I was waiting to give the citizens' time.
Go ahead, Nikki.
Gabe, I mean, there's some interesting points that we just brought up there. And I always believe in if you want to do better, you go find the best people out there, and you look at what they're doing, and you model yourself after them. And I don't, you know, I say, and I look at Keller. The other day, it did strictly that they do have an awful low tax rate. And if they're actually decreasing again, and they're also decreasing their homestead act, can we reach out to them? What are they doing?
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Wooton. Appreciate your service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Let's be very clear, the increase in the tax rate this year is on the debt side. So when we had a bond election last year, in fact, one of our bond committee members is in the audience, voters said they wanted sixty-seven million worth of projects approved, which carried a tax rate implication increase. So we are decreasing our operational side of the tax rate. The increase is because of bond projects, the largest of which, of which we've talked about is the library and senior center, which our seniors will stand to benefit from. So difficult situation in hiring environment. Those on fixed income on social security got a five-point-nine percent increase in 2022. I fully expect in 2023, there will be another significant increase. When we have to hire and fill vacancies in the city, we have to be competitive with the market, which requires salary adjustment. To address your point, it's real simple math. The median home value in Keller, I'm confident is twice what it is here in Saginaw. So you can have a lower rate, much like, say, South Lake. I would guess the median home value in South Lake, Texas is five or six-hundred thousand. So thirty-five cents on a higher median value honestly will create more taxable value. So I think comparatively, dollar for dollar, people get a better bang for their buck in a place like Saginaw. So we are certainly sensitive to the concerns of residents. But we also have a business to run and fill vacancies and continue to stay staffed so that we can serve the folks that come here. And as you know, everybody knows, we're growing, continue to grow, which places a greater demand on services. So we hope, and the chief spoke briefly, we hope to be staffed up soon in P D. We're down nine officer positions vacant, as well as two or three dispatchers. We've got multiple vacancies. It's a very, very difficult hiring environment.
I want to just jump on that, too. I don't have the slideshow from last week, but there was one slide on there. I think Councilmember Big Horse requested it of the statistics of the cities that we did the comparison on for a police department. And Keller was on there, and the median home taxable value is three-hundred-eighty-seven thousand.
So maybe Mr. Pete could ask TAD to increase our assessed value in Saginaw. Well, simple math, when you have a higher median value, you can have a lower tax rate. But if you, if you were to look at your total tax bill, it's gonna be higher than what it is in, here in Saginaw.
I have a question.
Sure.
How much would we have to cut out of our budget to not raise taxes?
I want to, I, originally, I threw out the number a million dollars, but it was more like eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, I think, when I actually calculated.
Eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars?
Eight-ninety-seven or eight-sixty-seven. It was close to nine-hundred thousand.
And where can we cut that?
So to have a decrease in the tax rate, we would need to cut people or programs. So the one-time things that are very expensive and, you know, the, the numbers kind of shock you, something like a backhoe, almost two-hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't get you there. You're talking people or programs.
So there's nothing in our budget that we can cut, or can we, how can I say this? Can we put off until next year to see if we can help the citizens more this year with everything that's going on? And, you know what I'm saying, there's gotta be some way that we can kind of do something to cut something, to help our citizens. Everybody's having a hard time this year, and that's mainly what we hear all the time, is that they're having a hard time, and I get it.
Understand. So people or programs, and we would look to you, what, what you'd recommend to, to cut or delay, so.
We could use some options.
A little bit careful about what we cut, like the back truck.
Well, I know that.
They, they re, part of, it's a trade-in so that they shoot for that sixty percent resale value. So if we actually extended a year or two years, by the time we get it in, it would actually cost us a lot more.
But there's gotta be something. Yeah, there's gotta be something that we can hold off on, or...
Can we delay like the Noel Street project?
Well, the Noel Street's gotta be...
That's not part of the operating.
No, it's not part of operating.
That's, that's debt.
So it's only operating, I mean, but, I mean, could we, I mean, could we, could we delay those projects?
No, because the debt's already been issued.
No, it's already...
The city council approved the sale of the bonds in May.
Already did that.
So we're committed to that.
That's phase, phase one.
Correct, phase one, and then we, the bonds for the library and senior center, which will go to construction early in '23, we're already committed. Bonds have already been issued.
So, Gabe, we got each, each department, each one got an operating budget. If we say did it straight across the board, per the amount of impact each department has over the operating budget, we're just gonna, we're just gonna cut that much percent out, just brute force, do it. What would that look like across each, like police, fire?
Well, I'm not so much worried about police and fire cutting them. We gotta have them. That's...
Well, no, we got that. Well, all, all I'm saying is that, that is, I ain't saying do it.
Yeah, I understand.
You then spread it across the whole city evenly. Here's the thing, the police and fire are the biggest part of our operating budget. Again, it's, it's just like that Patrick, sixty-five percent of school board, we're only twenty percent. So it, again, if you're really looking at cutting the budget and you want to take almost a million dollars out...
Nikki?
You're going to have to affect these two.
If my house catches fire, I sure won't be able to depend on the fire department to show up.
I agree. I'm just trying to point out that they're, they're absolutely so. But they're also the biggest drivers of our budget. And it will be very hard to take that much money out of our budget without affecting them. Unless we absolutely don't want, we, unless we want to absolutely shut our rec center down, unless we don't want to fix any of our roads, things like that.
Well, and we could also look for revenue options as well, too.
That's true.
I, I, you know, it's like I talked about at our last meeting, you know? We may have to get to the point where we start charging non-residents to use our facilities, like our library and our senior citizen center. And we don't have to charge them much. And I know Gabe mentioned it's only just a few hundred dollars, but, you know...
It is. Yeah, you're, you're not gonna make the structural changes unless you do something like Councilmember Lawson mentioned and, and actually cut something.
But, I mean, everybody sitting out here is, even those of here on this day is, we're all having to make adjustments in our budget and how we manage our households. And I think what Councilmember Lawson is asking is that each department, look how they manage their departments. Maybe you can need to cut out certain things, raise the temperature in your room a couple of degrees at your facilities. You know, these people out here are having to make difficult decisions.
So I would, I would offer up a few discretionary things. We're committed this year to training grain, but an event like Training Grain with staff time and effort is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. No one would say that's a, you know, it's a nice-to-have. It's not a necessary thing, although I personally really, really enjoy it, look forward to it. Some of our recreational programs unfortunately are in the nice-to-have category. The core is, is public safety, and that's any city in public works. So I would be open to take your suggestions if that's the will of the council. We start this process back in March, and it has never been a direction or an indication from the council that we wanted to cut services. If that was the desire, we would have brought you something that had some reductions in services.
Well, but look at where we're going now, you know? We're getting in harder times right now, where a lot of people are, that we didn't see in February and March.
Yeah. Now, the good news is our sales tax continues to be strong, which is why I think mid-year, we can look at potentially adding positions, and hopefully we get to fully staff. And in the future, the growth in our sales tax, we hope to shift the pieces of the pie so it's a greater proportion of our general fund, and we're less reliant on property tax.
I've got a question, sort of a alternative reality question. We're down nine police officers, right? But these are all, those business...
That's correct, yes.
Those positions are all budgeted, correct? What's our confidence that before the end of this fiscal year, that the 2022, 23, we can hire all nine positions?
It's not, not likely gonna happen that I have them all hired this year, but keep in mind, some of that, those funds are what offsets your overtime costs that we're incurring now.
Understand. Could we put two of those positions on hiatus? I don't know, what did you call it?
On hold.
Until, until the next budget year, because we probably couldn't hire them anyhow, save a little bit of money on this tax year? Is that an option? Is that, because we don't have those positions anyhow. They're not here. We're holding them because we want to hire somebody, but we, for whatever reason, we can't. Is that an option to save us a little bit on taxes, you know? Two positions, three positions, I don't know.
Is some of the positions that are empty, not just fire, but can we hold some of those positions? I mean, is everybody overworked so much that they couldn't hold it for a little bit, just to...
The key is, is to hold it and not eat up that budget in overtime.
That's right.
So you're basically left-hand sweeping the right-hand.
That's right.
So we don't have the source, so we're doing more overtime, which overtime is time and a half. But we're already eating up, so we can't hire, we can't hire them.
Yeah, but if you hire full-time, now you're having to pay all the benefits and all the other sundries that go with it, which is, again, you know, about fifty percent of their salary.
I, I would like to add in there that as long as we keep running on overtime as we are now, what I'm experiencing now is burnout with my folks that don't want to work the overtime, which makes covering events like Training Grain and the other events that we have all around town, I'm, I'm having to order people in to work those because they won't volunteer for it anymore. And the more I do that, the more probability is they're gonna act on one of these incentives and go to another city where they can get five thousand dollars of hiring bonus and make more money than what they're making here. Right now, I have folks that are dedicated to here that I'd really like to keep. And the more we do to make that an adverse relationship for them, the harder it is to encourage them to stay here.
Let me ask you a question on some of those things that the police officers do for extra Training Grain and stuff like that. Can't CERT and some of the other things that we have around, can't they help us with that?
So, so CERTs and CPA, I mean, those are volunteer organizations. So we, we put a request in almost every event we have for our CPA to give us assistance, and those that can do. But there's limited ability as to what they can do. I, I won't put a CPA member on a busy intersection and say, hey, you're, you got traffic control. I have to put an officer there. When it comes to security aspect, it has to be an officer that's there because I don't expect a citizen who might have an LTC to be the one offering security for the event. So the officer has to be there for that. So their role, while it's important to us, it's really a minimal role that, that I don't have to have a police officer at. But the, the bulk of things and, you know, Training Grain's a, a good one to talk about because you're talking, you, ten to fifteen thousand participants that show up. There's a huge safety aspect to that that we have to maintain. And that's why you will see, you know, sixteen officers at this event. It's, it's unfenced. We can't control ingress, egress. An attacker could come in from any direction, and we have to plan for the what-ifs. You know, I wished I didn't have to do that, that I could just plan for the... Last year, it was great. This year, it'll be great. But I have to plan for the what-ifs, and if that what-if happens, how do I address it? And, and that's why you see the kind of manpower that we have at those events. And, and it's, it's the rather be safe than sorry mentality, but unfortunately, that costs a lot of money to have those officers there.
So how can we go through the exercise of asking each one of the departments to, to come back? to come back with, and like I say, equal to their impact to the budget, each one of them to take a bite at how, what they would have to remove in order to save this million dollars, what's your minus, 800,000?
897,000, I found my number.
I'm, I'm, I'm just like rounding up to you, but anyways, why can't we do that? And then that way, we have, we can then look and say, okay, if we're going to do that, here's where the pain and the other side's gonna hit, because we can sit here and nitpick each department in here, and I have a really hard, I'm taking off, I have a hard time. I'd much rather see the experts of each department come in and say, okay, if you're, if you're gonna do this to us, council, here's what you're giving up, here's what the citizens have to give up. To me, it's a cost versus benefit.
I get it, I do. I just think that maybe we need to look at something, because times have changed since March, and people are complaining more that they can't afford things, and I get it, but...
You know...
How do we make, do we, does somebody need to make a motion for that to happen?
No, we just give directions to them.
Just give direction, that's what we just did, we just asked them to do that, so...
Is that what we're asking for?
Is that, is that the will of the council? Go ahead, Mary.
I just would like to point out, I think this budget is, everything on this budget is necessary, realistic, and reasonable, and our staff that works on the budget, they made cuts up front before presenting this budget to us. They made over $600,000 worth of cuts. They have a history of being very careful with the revenue that comes into our city. They are not throwing money away, they use cost-saving methods all the time, grants. One example that comes to mind is the police depart, I mean, the fire department, $800,000 vehi, new fire truck will be paid for, I'm sorry, it's more than $800,000, it's a million and something. And so they're paying for that by having saved $800,000 out of the budget of the new fire station and ARPA funds. The police department roof first came to our attention four or five years ago, needing a roof. They have not gotten that. They're finally gonna get it this year, ARPA funds, is that correct? So our departments do without things all the time. They are, they are not wasting money. So I just would like to speak in favor of the fact that our staff has shown a history of being very responsible with the funds. We have gone down on our tax rate when we are able to, and we go up when we're, when we're forced to do so. Everybody knew the tax rate was going to go up because of the bond election. I am so happy that our residents voted for that bond election and all of the items on there, and I don't want people to get thoughts in their head of, well, then I'll never vote for a bond election again. These were very necessary items on this bond election that the city needed desperately and had needed for years. So those things have to be paid for, and the citizens are getting a big bang for their buck for what this is costing. All of this goes to help our residents, help their quality of life, give them things they want and need. So I would just like to put a word in for stating that this is a realistic budget and that there are no extraordinary expenses that aren't needed in this budget.
Thank you, Mary. Other comments, concerns, questions?
Yes, I definitely have had people come to me about it, and it isn't that they're saying, you know, that Saginaw City's spending money like a drunken sailor on a Saturday night, it's they're hurting. I had a person come to me who has a couple kids, you know, and general working guy. His electric bill, because of this heat wave and stuff, had doubled, and, you know, they, they don't have discretion on it, that absolutely is coming straight out of, you know, they gotta cut something else in order to pay the electric bill, or they don't get electric. And, you know, I don't really think it hurts us to, to go back and, you know, go over the numbers one more time and to, to ask the what-if questions, you know? It's, it's not saying, oh, we're gonna cut that, it's just saying, let's go back and do the, the what-if one time, because the citizens are hurting a little bit, interest rates are, are going up, people's, like I said, this gentleman, his, his electric bill doubled, he, he had it there, and, you know, it wasn't that he was mad, it's just he's hurting, and he's not the only one. So for me, I, I don't have a problem spending a little more effort if I have to come here again for another meeting and do a little thing, that's, that's what I signed up for.
Things have changed since February, March of this year. When we first started all this, they looked a little bit better.
And things changed since we approved the bond as well. I mean, inflation has just gone absolutely crazy, gas prices are creeping back up again. People are hurting, and it's not too much to ask.
Not everybody gets a lot of money, you know, at the end of the month. A lot of people don't, they're on fixed income, so they don't have anything to come in other than what they've got fixed, and with everything going up right now, they're having a hard time.
And Gabe talked about, you know, their medical insurance, health insurance for staff going up 7%, mine went up $170 a month. You know, that hurts too. It doesn't hurt.
I mean, there might be something that we've, not necessarily overlooked, but something that have changed since November, February, March, that we could maybe just hold off for a little while.
And nobody on this... And nobody here is saying that the city is irresponsible. We're just asking them to go back and take a closer look, because we have to work together as citizens and as the city operations to make this city successful. If we tax the people out of their homes, then they've got nothing coming in.
We've ordered out the third lowest tax rate out of all these cities on the west.
Doesn't want to check, you know?
And could I...
I'm not saying it is, but you're, the way you're talking is like, we're just on the taxation providing. You know, it's the third lowest now.
Times are hard now.
I'm on a fixed income, like everybody else is, that we're talking about.
Mary, go ahead, Mary.
Just to remind everybody, the average home, the value of the average home, this will result, this, this budget, this, this rate will result in $3 a week increase. Now, I, I know that times are hard, they're hard for all of us, but I do believe I can find $3 extra dollars a week to pay these taxes.
You don't have to, because you're a senior, your taxes will slow down.
And I don't even have to, and thank you very much, it's one of the perks of being elderly.
A lot of those folks with fixed incomes, their taxes will go down because they're seniors.
Yes.
So that's something to keep in mind.
But, you know...
You can always pay the full amount.
That's true.
That's okay.
You can pay extra cash.
But, you know, $3 a week, when you put it in that perspective, I don't believe that people will have a hard time finding $3 a week extra.
Well, hold on. And I'm not, but you're talking about, again, you have to look at a person's whole household. Now, I came from a, a very poor background, and I can remember a few years ago going back and finding, when I was going to college, what my average, what I made in one year, and it was like, just, it was under $10,000, it was like $6,000 and some dollars, okay? I make, me and my wife make a lot more than that, but I still remember that. And there's people out there, you're saying, oh, it's only $3. It's only $3 for this, and then it's $3 because their, their car insurance ran up, and it's $3 because the school district says they gotta buy new clothes, and it's $3 because their electric bill went up. So I get a little turned when I hear, oh, it's only $3. It's only $3 for that one little piece, you gotta add everything else that's also adding in, and all that adds up. And again, I definitely ain't saying, oh, we want to cut that out of our budget, but I do think that I owe it to the citizens sitting here in this chair to go over the budget one more time and just make sure. Now, also too, and I'll ask Gabe this, when you do put something on there, like say the vac truck or something, I would like to note, Cliff notes at the bottom, if we don't buy this this year, next year it's gonna cost you 20% more. I need to understand those trade-offs. But we all, I feel, just me, that we all owe it to the citizens to do a little extra, let's go over our budget one more time, and make sure that we're giving them the biggest bang for the buck.
And I just want to make one comment, because we keep talking about the vac truck, so the vac truck is in the enterprise fund, so it won't affect anything. But also, you, you can't, to get where you want to go, it can't be one-time items, it's not gonna be equipment, it's gonna be services, it's gonna be ongoing costs. So that's either supplies or people.
Yeah, I'm not bad, it was just a good example.
Right, okay.
And let's remember what this, you say $3 a week, $12 a month, what they're getting for this? They're getting a new senior center, they're getting a new library, getting a new street, actually a couple new streets. The fire hose is, is in there as well, you're right. So we're, we're providing a lot for folks. We've had a lot of requests for the senior center, that's the biggest complaint, one of the biggest complaints I've gotten in the last several years is the senior center, the senior place to meet, the senior under COVID, all that, all the issues, so we're trying to resolve that. Unfortunately, that costs a lot of money.
But again, at the time of the approval, nobody expected the economy to tank the way it did, so we're just asking, we're just asking to help, nobody's arguing anything.
I think the economy, tanking is, is a poor way of putting it. Inflation has risen, we're not in a recession yet.
It's risen a lot for some people.
Inflation has ridden, gas went up, then gas came back down.
It's going back up.
So I don't know if it's as terrible and doom as gloom as people make it out to be, a lot of people do get increases, people on fixed incomes don't, that's why we did the tax exemption for seniors.
But again, what's it gonna hurt for us to go through the exercise? I think people are very well aware of what they're getting.
I, I'm not sure if they are, because I hear a lot of criticism on this taxes, and the taxes are almost entirely, the increase is due to the bond election. If the citizen didn't pass it, we would not be sitting here talking about this, period. We, I wouldn't be building a senior center or a, a library if the bond election didn't pass, period. That means we...
Maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit.
But the economy goes up and comes down, it, it goes all around. So just, just keep that in mind, that we are providing a lot for this.
I'd be glad, but my stock's going back down.
So it's not just like we're taking and taking and taking, we're giving the citizens a lot, a lot back for all this money as well.
I want to just say one thing too, certainly appreciate the discussion, we've got to remember our city employees in all this. So we showed you the graph, and I know some of the numbers might not have been to your liking, but the average of the 10 cities increased because all of the city employees are feeling the effects of inflation as well, was 5%, which is what we proposed. So if we go to cutting positions, council needs to understand that that is a service level reduction, and what I would submit to you, and we'll do the exercise you've asked us, although I don't like this, we're one team, the reality is, we're here for health and safety, Public Works, public safety, things that are recreational in nature unfortunately are discretionary, so I believe that those should be viewed, and if we really want to make a cut, although it would be painful, and I use the rec center multiple times a week, we can close the rec center if that's your will. If it is your direction to lower the tax rate as low as possible, we can close the rec center, we can close the senior center, might make sense till we build the new senior center. We're gonna have this discussion again when we build a bigger facility, because this is no surprise, bigger facilities have larger operational needs, so...
And staff.
And, and staff, yeah. So we're, we're happy to do what you've asked us to do, but we're talking about people and programs here, there's, there's not probably anything easy to cut out, or we already would have had that discussion.
All right, so how are we gonna proceed? We've had a discussion on this, how are we gonna proceed with data and still, what's our next step? What do you recommend, Kim?
We'll, we'll come back with a list for you of, of how you can get to the 897,000.
You'll email that list out to council before the next council meeting, so we can have time to chew on it?
Yeah, I, we, we would like, if, if you feel like we need to have a meeting in between now and September 9th, we can, or is it September, September 6th, we can do that, but we should adopt a budget and a tax rate the first meeting in September, so that we can get our tax rate submitted to Tarrant County on time.
Sure, understand. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry for being on my soapbox so long, but I just wanted to make one other point. I did live in another city in North Tarrant County for 29 years, and for a certain period of time, the voters decided that they would never elect anybody to city council unless they promised not to raise taxes. So that was the case for several years, and the outcome of that was eventually, staff got no raises for multiple years in a row. The library was closed, the water park was closed, there were, they were unable to keep the medians watered, I'm quite sure they lost a lot of staff due to that. So it took years, and there's a person on staff right now that actually worked for the city of Bedford during that time, and I won't point out that person, but it was painful for everybody. We have to be realistic and do what's necessary to keep the city running smoothly, to allow the residents to have the quality of life that they already have, and not ask them to, to cut that down, and, you know, the city is also experiencing inflation costs. So anything that would be cut, I don't think would result in much of a decrease, and so we might be losing some, our staff is overworked right now, has been overworked for quite some time. So that's just gonna, that's just gonna make that situation even worse. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary. All right, so I think we have a plan going forward, we'll get information between now and next meeting for council to chew on, get your feedback to, to Kim, and then we can discuss at the next council meeting. If that sounds like a good plan to everybody. So this item is, there's no action required for this item, correct, Kim?
You need to close the public hearing, I believe, and I don't think we have to table this one, we'll just...
We didn't say anything about a vote, so just close public hearing, okay. All right, so no more discussion, then at 7:07, we are out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, make a motion, we adjourn.
We want to vote, or just raise our hands? Although the fay, raise your right hand.
Look, I'm both of them up there.
There you go. At 7:07, we're out of here. Thank y'all.
I got a good sunburn Saturday welding.
Did you?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
We having fun? Hey, I'm doing good, how you doing?
I'm good, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
No problem.
I think he had the right kind of sword of, well, I think he did it.
Huh?
We're trying to get better.
Oh, yeah, everybody...
But it's always so hard to get people to want to come up, because they're so afraid of just...
Yeah.
Or just working on it.
Next.
Thank you.
I wonder if I had a chance.
I'm not, you're right, I'm not saying that the family is over with looking at all these things. I can look at these, I can't make a...
Well, everyone just goes down.
That's what they do. If, if the big company gets bad, they save a lot. They're saving a billion dollars a year.
When I was at Lockheed Martin, they laid people up. And guess what? The people that were, got stuck doing extra work and it was the same people they got in.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have, we'll have, I'm making tears in my eyes.
Prior to it, there was conflict.
Where's the lady's name?
Unless you know what's happening, all of them, these are incidents that are random in nature, we try to use them.
So, there's things that need to change.
All right, I want to update my question.
Cut off bad things left to do for others.
These are personal conflict between A and D. Only A and D know about it. There ain't any other thing. There's nothing for us to interact with or even get to the case of the sun.
So, we can't just put those up? Have the national council neighborhood watches and have rules and treaties have to be pulled through that. And so, there would have to be a formal setup of neighborhood watch.
This is where I promise the people I was going to go from. So, yeah, I can, I can have someone in the department to cut the homes, the guy that's doing all the foreshathing of the maintenance. And so, that's what I'm saying to me. All of our legacy is, come by programs. These are things that are, I don't have any training, I haven't trained in quite a amount. So, I understand, I understand that's why.
And so, the thing that we have down works the best, doesn't the chairs, allows us to catch the guys and that's... So, we encourage everybody that can, that wants to screen the system, please put on the camera, the pictures, the grab, like, exactly, have a motion. Then we're able to see. And so, we actually have booked starting a program here that's called... We proposed it a couple of years ago. Just to go to the actual, it's a voluntary program that citizens can register with us to say, hey, I have a camera. We don't ask for access to it. We just want to know where they are so we can have them around and we can say, if there's a bug around...
And Mr. P, I understand you got a camera, but you might look in the scene and you got anything?
So, we have a 360 degree perimeter or horizon or something that you know you can get that.
Except they allow us to make a formal, you look at your system and if you find something, you call me back and say, hey, I think I have something here. Yeah, you burn off to the desk, we bring you a thunder out, put it on there and take it back to the house.
You know, I don't see anything with people like this on any normal...
And I'm sure this is happening potentially.
Yeah, I guess.
This is a...
He's not seeing me.
He, he, his body's a good man, he can work.
And so, that's, that's how this crap unfolds.
I tell you what I'm looking at.
I don't want to drop names or anything, absolutely, they do the hard part of the call.
It would be better for you.
Maybe, maybe work some hours.
She said, I have, I have a son who's about seven or eight, also a very...
Husband and I are two neighbors in a little area.
Make this neighborhood safe, this will be two kids.
And I said, yes, I intend to set up neighborhood watch.
I wanted to try to ask about it.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to have it.
So, I think you're a keen man.
Together we make a difference.
It's kind of speaking, you know?
She said, yes, husband and I are...